Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046, Place 1975, C231, S1, amended 2006, C70, S2. The Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on December 15th of 2017 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administrator Administration Building, Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on December 15th, 2017. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillum, Ms. Jones, Ms. Lotaraca, Ms. Lozinski, Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Etienne, Ms. Chavez Anderson.
Oh, here. Thank you. Stand there for the, you know, flag some week please. At this time, we'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. James Semelaro. Thank you. Okay, Madam Superintendent, Mrs. Sancha Gray, I understand that you have presentations.
Before I stand up, I just want to take some time to acknowledge this presentation. I'm very delighted that the Asbury Park School District has been recognized as an innovative school district for the third year in a row. And for three years, we have consistently presented in a national conference due to the innovative programming, practices, and because of the significant gains that we've made. While we have a long way to go, we have still been recognized nationally for the great work and the movement of the needle in terms of our student academic performance and achievement. So tonight, I am very delighted, as the superintendent of this district, to specifically highlight the members of this team that are responsible for illuminating the path to a brighter future. So I'm going to be joined by our board president, vice president, and members from the board. I'd love to present medals and certificates to our Teachers of the Year, as well as our Educational Services Professionals of the Year. The work that we've accomplished collectively as a district is not the work of a singular individual, is not reflective of an individual's school or one person, it is the work of an entire team. And so it gives me great joy to specifically highlight the individuals from 2018 school year to 2017, 2018 school year that have been recognized for being exemplary educators. Madam President and members of the board, if you would. This is a very important moment that I would love to ensure we have captured appropriately. Mr. Kaplow has asked us to arrange ourselves accordingly. Are we arranged appropriately? Okay.
We learned, we learned.
Okay, so I'll speak loud. Our first Teacher of the Year is Belinda Hughes.
Congratulations to you.
Our next Teacher of the Year is Ms. Archelin Belford. And I did not mention that Ms. Belinda Hughes is Teacher of the Year for the Third Good Marshall Elementary School. Next teacher, Sarita Gogan. Ms. Lynn Johnson could not be with us tonight, but she's also a Teacher of the Year from the Bradley Elementary School. Our Education Services Professional, Ms. Vermeet Jermaine. Our next Educational Services Professional is Tracy Cafrioni. Congratulations. Terry Johnson is our next.
Next we have Ms. Janice Hughes.
Our next Education Services Professional is Esther Murphy. Our last Educational Services Professional is Jacqueline Tillman. I don't believe Ms. Tillman is here tonight, but again, wanted to make sure we mentioned her. If we could all come together and just let's give them a rousing round. As we share, it's the collective effort of everyone. And so what you have in front of you are classroom teachers, custodial engineers, office assistants, and ancillary support staff. And so they are responsible for building this brighter future for our students. Thank you so much for all that you do. So like our students, we celebrate, we want to celebrate our staff, our team, for their awesome contribution, and so delighted that they were able to bring their own support group out to cheer them along as we all share in their joy. Our next presentation will be with Ms. Debbie Sylvia on the Power of Ten.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm really, really pleased to be able to come here tonight to do some work with you about a successful program that we've been running for the past three years. At the middle school, we run it, and at the high school, called the Tower of Death. So, a little hard to see, so I'll explain it to you. The Power of Ten is a program without its power. So we want students to recognize that they have the power within them to change the trajectory of their future. So we're picking students for this program, students who are being nominated for this program who have potential to succeed, but who, in their lives, have a lot of personal circumstances that are interfering with their ability to be successful in the classroom. So these are students that we want to see graduate that need a little bit of extra support, or a lot of extra support. So what I always heard in education when I go to conferences and stuff is, every student should be treated equally, everybody needs the same opportunities. You know, no matter what district you're in, everybody should get the same. And that's not true. If you work in the prior Abbott district, where I've worked previously in Bylin, and here now, Asbury Park, you know that kids in these districts need more. They don't need the same as everybody, they have to have more because they have greater hardships that they're dealing with. So we want kids to recognize the power that they have and be able to give them the support they need to draw on that power to be successful. So we want them to succeed in their personal lives, in their school, and in their community. So we try and involve them in everything that we can to give them the support services so that they keep growing and achieve their goals. So we give them a lot of opportunities. When the program first started, it started mainly as a guidance program with just the counselors running the program. It was pieces of a program, it wasn't a comprehensive program. Every year that we're going further into the program, we're getting more comprehensive in the services. And that's because we're drawing on other departments to help support the program and provide these opportunities. So the kids this year, there's about ten kids on average from each grade level that participate. We had a few extra this year, we had a cohort of 45. But these are some of the things that they participated in, the vacant poets, job players, all the boys went to the male minority initiative, the Renaissance there. I mean, you'll see the picture in the middle, they went to the NFL Jets Business Camp, you know, where they were able to see the business aspect of the NFL, not just the athletic opportunities. So these are just some of the great opportunities. The theory in this program is connections. And we learned when our new district superintendent had come in and taken over that we focused on relationships. We recognize that relationships with the students, the more they have, the more likely they're going to stay at school, the more comfortable they're going to feel coming to us when they have a hardship for support. So we want to make connections. So not only with our own internal, but outside, we want to give them those opportunities in the community and in these activities as well, and form those connections. So these are our new support teams. When we met this year with the Power of Ten, we had a revamping ceremony in January, we had a nice big breakfast for the kids, it was really a great celebration. They're being selected for the program. And now we have a full program because it's not just a guidance program, these are our support teams for the kids. So you see, we have the Student Assistance Counselor, we have KIDS, which is Rodney's nonprofit social-emotional agency that helps us with a lot of the mentoring and yoga and all those things. Our College and Career Readiness Coordinator just got an award, she doesn't get a gold medal for nothing. So she's instrumental in setting up a lot of the scripts and stuff for the kids. The services they give with the SPOT, and of course, our Attendance Officer. So now we have a comprehensive program, and we're going to continue to build on that because I think when we see the results, we'll be pretty happy with that. So what can kids do? When they're powerful, they realize that power, and they have supports, they are successful. This is our cohort this year, we had 45 kids in the program, and we have an 87% retention rate. Two of the kids were transferred to a different district, so they're not dropped out of the program because, you know, they dropped out of school, they just moved. We lost four students out of the 45, so I think we have a pretty good retention rate, 87%. But this is the most exciting thing, all 13 seniors that were in the program graduated, every single one of them. This includes a fifth-year senior, one that didn't quite make it last year that came back, had the, you know, the will to come back and keep at it, and graduated this year with this cohort, so we're especially proud of them as well. All of these seniors have a post-secondary plan, 10 of them are going to college. A lot of them, I won't say a lot of them, but maybe about three or four of them were actually select, accepted into four-year institutions, but because of financial, you know, concerns, they're at Brookdale. So I think that's a perfect place for them to start. 10 of 13 kids in college and three working, to me, that's a success. So we're really excited about that. And when we have programs in this district, you know, Mrs. Gray always stresses to us the importance of, we have to evaluate our programs and make sure the efforts and the time that we're putting into the programs are yielding us the results that we are looking for. So I hope when you see this, you feel that the efforts of all of the people involved to make this program run are yielding these good effects for us. These are some academic data that we have on the students. So the red you'll see is marking period one, that's the percentage of students from each grade level in that cohort that were failing in marking period one. So by the end of the year, you can see a drastic reduction in most of those students that were failing. Again, you'll see in the seniors, 38% were failing from marking period one, we didn't have any failures at the end of the year. So again, you can see the data shows that the program is working, the kids are getting the supports that they need to be academically successful in the classroom. Not that it's perfect, but that's a big, that's a big jump there. And these are the percentages of students that participated in the various services provided, so the personal and academic counseling, the social-emotional programs, 100% of the students participated in those. I can't stress enough how important it is that we have these social-emotional programs that Dr. Howard and her firm have worked tirelessly to bring into the district, and what a difference it's made to the students. We are going to continue those programs. Of course, our College and Career Readiness Institute with Ms. Sue, you know, chairing that, setting up a lot of those activities for the students, very instrumental in keeping our students engaged and wanting to come to school because now they have a reason to be here. They have opportunities to do job shadowing, they have opportunities to take trips, they have opportunities to go to the Jets. I mean, these are not things that typical schools would be able to offer their students. And of course, the services that they receive on the SPOT as well. These are just some pictures of our social-emotional program that works. And where we need to improve. So like I said, every year we're getting better, but we're not perfect. We do have to improve. One of the areas I'm most concerned about, to our attendance, we struggle with that. We struggle with that with kids who aren't in the program, but especially these students. Credit withdrawal is when students miss, they pass the class, but they have so many days absent, they lose credit in the class. Then it becomes a challenge for the counselors to come up with option two opportunities for the kids to gain those credits. So it becomes a constant struggle to keep them on track for graduation. You can see, we have a lot of students that had credit withdrawal throughout the year that were in this cohort. So that's an area that we're going to continue to focus on and brainstorm about how we can improve the attendance of the students in this program. And the other one is the discipline. I mean, it's a great statistic that 60% of the kids in this program did not have any out-of-school suspensions. So that's a win for us as far as, you know, that's great that those kids didn't. I have 40% of the kids that did. So to me, we still have work to do in this area, and that's why it's really important that we keep the social-emotional programs that we have, because those help kids regulate their emotions, that help them identify how to handle different situations in a more positive way than just, you know, losing their temper. They have a place now when they become upset in the classroom, probably because it's something that happens before they even walk into the classroom. They have a means now to go to a room, to meet with a counselor, to do yoga, to do meditation, to do breathing exercises and de-escalate, and then they go back to class. So that's a win for us. So we're going to continue working with those programs, and Rodney's programs, and the SAC, and all the counseling programs as well, to keep that going. And hopefully, we'll see improvement in this area. Looking ahead to 2019, things that we want to continue doing, all the things that we're doing now, and we also are going to add a mentoring program. And I'm happy that the high school's ILT team, or Instructional Leadership Team, has come to me and said, "We want to do this, we want to help." They had some work with the Power of Ten program before, at the point of maybe the mid-year, when they took all the students that were failing and assigned them a mentor. But it wasn't enough, and it was too late in the year. So what they're going to do now, they already have the students named, and when school starts, each of their students will have a mentor for the whole year. So again, that's another connection, so they have their counselor, they have the SAC, they'll have their mentor, they'll have the SPOT, you know, they'll have U chooses programs. So they have a lot of opportunity to build a support network. We're also going to implement the universal screening, that again, comes out of Dr. Howard's department, and that will allow us to identify students who the services need a tiered approach of services, and we're going to develop a student advisory board. So what we'd like to do is have the students be more empowered in this program as it develops, and have them come up with the activities, have them suggest the ideas of where they want to visit, what colleges they want to see, what job players they want to go to, what programs they want to look into, so that it's not staff-driven, but it's really driven by the students in the program. And I believe that they're able to do that. I believe they have the power to do that, so we're going to work on that this year. Thank you. Any questions?
One question. This is just a program in the high school, correct?
No, it's not. We were charged with it. Dr. Epple asked me to start that up at high school three years ago, but we started it actually at the middle school so that we can continue those kids in the program from middle school all the way through graduation.
Just look at the data, I'm just supposed for ninth.
That's all the data from the high school, yeah, I don't have data from the middle school.
Okay, but it is also in the middle school.
It is in the middle school.
Anything in the elementary school, or just middle school?
Middle school and high school, yes.
I just want to commend Ms. Sylvia and Dr. Howard and their teams for an awesome job. When we think about where we were and where we are, I'm very refreshed and energized to see as we move to the next level, there's increased articulation amongst the departments to really provide comprehensive supports for our students. Similar to college preparation not beginning at the high school, to your point, Ms. Breach, we are definitely looking at ensuring the supports begin much earlier before high school. So thank you so much, team, for the great work that you're doing.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, your report please.
My report is very brief. We are in the midst of our superhero summer steam academy. It's a 20-day enrichment program where we have been providing and piloting environmental projects, athletic projects. We have wonderful partnerships that are taking place with conserve wildlife, with our step team, and so that's complementing the literacy and the math programs to avoid the summer slide. I will have those numbers for you in the next, at the next board meeting, but we're very delighted that we have these comprehensive supports in our summer program for our students.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Madam State Monitor, your report please.
I'd just like to report to the board that everybody should have the mid-year report that I sent out. If you have questions or would like to discuss any of the items on there, please feel free to contact me, and I will certainly do so, sit down and go over things with you. It's been a little awkward because there are three different factors that have to be considered. One, which is what I mentioned to Kathy, I know you're moving and want to move towards certification, however, you know, we have the Q-SAC issue as well that we have to be addressing, and that is a concern because, you know, that, all of these things should be coordinated to come out with the same end result. So now we have budget on top of that that may hinder whatever, whether it's professional development or other things that could possibly get caught up in the budget crunch. So there are a number of things going on in the district. I will be, you know, meeting with Les, I think it's in two weeks, prior to his official visit to the district, which is August 30th, in which he will go over again governance with me, and we will try to move the district in the same direction that Kathy is attempting to do. We can't be out of sync, I guess my bottom message is, where one is saying one thing and one is saying something else, it would make no sense in it. It would destroy the It would make no sense and it would destroy the validity of the certification. So that's it for now.
Thank you. So we are going to go into executive session. I need a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Question. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Ashbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore be it resolved that the Ashbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on this date, July 26, 2018, at Ashbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes as outlined and described below. Upon return, action may be taken. It will be number seven litigation or contract matters, attention client privilege, and personnel matters. So we anticipate being out for at least a half hour. Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Roll call. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Lattaraca?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Sabes Anderson?
Yes, here.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to number eight on our agenda, public participation. In accordance with board policy 0167, and there's no one here, so therefore I am closing it.
And now Mr.?
Mr. Hastings, acceptance of minutes, please.
I have a motion for A10A and B.
Move.
Question?
Mr. Hastings.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Sabes Anderson?
Yes.
All items carry.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Good evening, board members. With your permission, I would like to move to request a consent agenda for items B1 to B9.
Need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Question?
Okay, Mr. Hastings.
I second.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, I'm staying on B13A.
3A, thank you. Ms. Etienne?
Yes, abstaining on everything, I mean, yes, except I'm abstaining on B13B.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All items carry.
Mr. Hastings, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam President. Could I get a motion for all items, C1 number one to C4 number 10?
Motion.
Question?
This is all items, C1 to C4. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All items carry.
Now before adjourned the meeting, please be mindful that we do have an August 16th special meeting. Meet all of you here, please. Thank you, enjoy your weekend, and good night. Need a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.